Good slush, Joe. It's really well done. I mean, we looked at it in the brief book, so it's very well done. If you could state your names and your positions, please, and then we'll get started. You can have the floor, okay?
We're Carter, the Planning Director.
Andrew Illuminati, County Attorney's Office.
Clark Meadows, County Zoning Administrator.
All right, thanks for coming here. We appreciate you taking your time, yes. Who would like to start, Andrew?
I think I've been tasked with that.
Okay.
So, this project began with the previous council. Former Councilmember McCain wanted to understand and, to a degree, codify the current practices of the county department into the county code. The former council referred it to the Planning Commission. Councilmember Holloway said something about the Planning Commission. And beginning before it even went to the Planning Commission, staff undertook, I'll include myself in that, to review multiple county codes from throughout the eastern shore in southern Maryland, discuss the current practices. Mr. Meadows went to a national training for potential best practices. And then that information was put into a first draft that was presented to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, led by Chairman DeShiel, diligently went through each of the sections, had, what, probably five, seven meetings on this, Councilmember Holloway?
Six.
And staff came to each one, there was public comment, and at the end of the day, the proposed legislation that's before you is the work product of that. So, it recognizes that renewable energy as a sustainable resource is growing, it's being addressed by the legislature every session. Solar energy is one of those implementations of sustainable resources. And what this legislation seeks to accomplish is to codify the current standards that are used by the county and place that into the code. So, the goals are to convert practice to code and to standardize the process for approval and implementation for solar energy systems throughout the county. So, currently, applications, I think, to understand what the three types of solar are, there's solar utility. Now, this is, at this time, regulated by the state, and it's anything greater than two megawatts. What are some examples of the solar utility throughout the county, Mr. Meadows?
There's an 18-megawatt facility just south of Hebron, off 11 DeShiel Road. That's the only large-scale facility we have online currently.
So, that gives you an idea of how large the state requirement is. Then, solar miner is anything that's less than two megawatts. That's the vast majority of what people see when they drive around the county.
That's correct.
Slush.
And then, the solar accessory is sort of the residential panels on the rooftop, individual measures to benefit from that process. And each of these has different potential requirements, but standards to consider. Setbacks is one of the important ones. This was expressed in that when an individual has a piece of property and they want to convert it from a field to solar, it's going to have an impact on their neighbors around them. Some individuals have acres upon acres of property, others do not. The minimum of a 75-foot buffer from all property lines is going to ensure that that's the earliest that a fence is even seen. And then, as we get through the legislation, proposed legislation later, you'll see that there's buffers of native plants and trees with the ultimate goal to grow and ideally prevent public observation of the facility. Approval and installation currently is through the Board of Appeals for all matters, correct? Except for personal residential?
The state of Maryland considers the facilities exceeding two megawatts AC output as being power generating stations that would be processed through the Public Service Commission. So, the county, other than being an interested party on those larger projects, only considers and works with those facilities that are two megawatts or lower.
Okay. And then, at the county level, if an individual wanted to put panels on their house, do they currently need a special exception from the Board of Zoning?
No, that's handled as a building permit process.
But to build something that's larger than personal residential needs to come before the Board of Appeals?
Or is allowed inherently if it were in the heavy industrial zoning district?
Okay. So, I have a question. So, are these, what we're proposing as far as these restrictions, are these only on small projects? And we're not, we don't have any restrictions that we can put in place on the really large projects? I don't know if I'm understanding what you're saying. It confuses me.
I apologize.
No.
So, over two megawatts is at the county level at this point? The county, and there is some developing legislation to change that number to five megawatts, there's some legislation to have greater county input, but at this point in time, the law as written is over two megawatts, really, the county has nothing, no say in the matter.
So, and so that the public understands is the megawatt terminology really correlates to the size of these, of these solar panel projects, correct?
If I could put it in some context, the majority of the cases the Board of Appeals has considered around two megawatts, maybe just below that threshold, is about 10 or 12 acres on a piece of ground, the total solar field area. The larger facilities, Mr. Illuminati is, the county is considered an interested party, council included, planning and zoning. So, we would act as participants in that Public Service Commission process, much like an interested party would be in a normal special exception hearing. So, we would represent the county and what our standards would be relative to the underlying zoning district. So, we are participants, we just are not empowered as being the primary source of review.
So, I guess, the purpose of this, I guess, is to move it forward with either a resolution or a bill, is that correct?
Yes, I was directed.
Yes.
That being the case, would part of that maybe, should we maybe include in there that, on these larger five projects, that the county would state that some representative from the county shall attend these Maryland Public Service Commission meetings when it is greater than the five megawatts, correct? With the emphasis, I guess we could go so far as to say with the emphasis that we would like them to take into consideration the same exact standards for the five-megawatt projects as we have set forth for the two-megawatt projects. Does that sound reasonable, or does that really turn things upside down?
Well, I believe, Mr. Meadows, typically when that happens, he is a participant, as he had stated. So, we do make some, whether he actually attends, or whether or not if he sends in an actual document of interest.
Right, yeah.
But I think, what I think, I'm making sure I pretty much understand, you would like to see something that states that, that there shall be an actual participation.
Right, and I want to make sure that I understand the four corners here before I make these suggestions. But, I mean, I've seen when they come down and they have their public hearings, sometimes it's like a small room in a hotel somewhere.
Library area.
Yeah, there's three people.
Yes.
And I'm not, I've never been quite sure how much influence that really has. I don't know if the council, through this, may need to take stronger position and that if there are larger ones, that maybe we have two sections to this bill that says for the less than and for the greater than, then we should formally take a more written position on this, maybe so we just strengthen that. Because honestly, for the larger ones, I think there should be more buffers. I think, just my opinion, Joe.
I guess, the question is, what regulations does the state have? Do they have buffers and do they have trees? Do they, do they do regulation, the state? I mean, do they have setbacks? You know, I mean, that's...
I can't speak to that being formally codified. My experience with these larger facilities, the one that is already online, the one's under construction, they, it's a two-step process, they have to issue the certificate of public convenience and necessity. That is a review process through the local body, be it, you know, the county in this instance. And then, the public hearings held for the facility itself, assuming that the license is issued. And my experience has been, the developers are, the more cognizant and respective they are of the local standards, the easier the process is for them to get the approval. So, it's never been, my experience with the facilities here in Wycomico County, it's never been confrontational. They have adopted anything that we have suggested and moved forward with those.
Yes, so, what I'm hearing is that for a two-megawatt facility and under, we don't need, they don't need approval or anything, they just get a permit? Is that, is that what I'm, is that what I'm understanding? I'm just trying to put two and two together. If I'm wrong, just let me know.
Mr. Illuminati will work through his presentation, which will explain that a little bit, but currently, depending on the zoning district, a two-megawatt facility would either be allowed inherently, let's say, for instance, in a heavy industrial zoning district, with normal building permit, soil conservation, the normal process anyone would go through developing a piece of property. In the A1 district, majority of the county, it would require a special exception.
Okay, but under two mega, was it megawatts? Is that it? If it was 1.8 megawatts, would they have to do the same process, or they can?
Yes.
Okay, the same process. So, you're asking us to, what exactly are you asking us? Because I, this is just all new to me, and I just want, you know, I want to make sure I make the right decision.
So, it's basically taking what the current practice is and putting it into the county code. So, right now, if an individual wants to erect a solar energy system on their property, they'd have to come in with the plans, depending on zoning district, depending on what the actual intent is. There is this internal mechanism of deciding, is it inherently allowed, depending on the zoning district, or does it need a special exception? But nowhere in the code is that written. It's just the department policy and procedure. So, it's more of a, making it available to everybody to see, so that an individual can go to the code, say, before I do X, what are the requirements of me? And that, instead of, to a degree, calling staff, having that conversation, taking staff's time, potentially engaging an engineer, somebody of that nature to help explain it, this would all be there, yes.
So, just...
Mr. Wynn, the current practice, the zoning code identifies this use as a privately-owned and operated utility. It was at the request of a former councilperson that we look into separating solar as something specific out of that. The proposed legislation is consistent with the practices that we have been using since, I think, 2015 was probably the first large-scale solar that came into the county. But what we are doing with this request and proposal is separating solar out specifically.
So, basically, you guys are following, it's going to be the same guidelines, you're just putting it into law. You're taking, you're putting it into code, but you're still doing it now, you're still following the same rules now, you just want it in the code.
That's correct.
And some more protections for the county. So, for example, at the, there's nothing in the current code about decommissioning, because it's just not there. But, as Councilmember Holloway brought up during the Planning Commission meetings, there's not a desire for the county to have abandoned solar fields 30 years down the line, like there are abandoned chicken farms. And so, what part of the proposed legislation is to make sure that these entities are going to put up with the county a source of funds that will ensure that if that company goes under, if the land gets sold, the business is sold, whatever it is, that at the end of the day, the county's holding a document that says this is worth X amount of money to go remove and remediate these solar energy systems and return the site as it was usually 20 to 25 to 30 years earlier.
Now, I was just asking, would it, I don't know if there's anything on it, but like, when all these solar panels are out, is there any way, like, you know, for a fire hazard down the road, like 10 years down the road, if there's a wiring that's, you know, freight or something, is there anything in the, anything in this code that says we need to have it, like, inspected every, once every couple of years, just to make sure we're not going to have a fire in the middle of a field from a solar panel? I don't know if that's something that's needed to be in there, it's just, you know, something that I was just thinking of.
There's nothing regarding specific inspections every X period of time.
Okay. All right.
So, I think if Mr. Illuminati can actually continue...
Yeah, we appreciate you taking...
That that would be very, very much helpful.
Okay, thank you.
So, there are the buffers that we discussed earlier, three staggered rows of plant materials. So, those are going to be native species, and they have to be preserved and maintained to provide that visual screening. So, the processes, as we get to the next slide, it talks about what's permitted and what's not permitted. It still discusses what the current process is, that a solar facility shall comply with Public Service Commission regulations. There are certain noise requirements. You don't really think that this is going to be noisy, and it's not particularly, but there are noise requirements at the state level that are then incorporated into the county code. So, even though you're not greater than two megawatts, you're still going to have those noise restrictions in place. If they connect their utilities, so some people are harnessing that solar energy and then they're converting it into use at the house, other individuals are selling it back to an energy facility, there's, and the whole bill's been shared, but this is the highlights of it, that's written into the proposed legislation. So, this is the map, or the proposed permitted use, where, again, accessory being what you think of as personal use on the house, miner being less than two megawatts, and where that would be specially accepted, or require special exception by the Board of Appeals, and then finally, solar utility, and where that would be, this county would be the interested party, but the ultimate decision for that is left to the Public Service Commission, or CPCN. So, are there any questions about, in seeing where this, the proposed permitted uses?
I would just ask, I guess you have, like, you'll have public hearings on this, and then if, like, if someone wants to build one in their yard, you know, if they have, like, 10 acres and they have a bunch of neighbors, are we, you know, will they have to, you know, have the public notice ahead of time, and just like standard? So, yeah.
So, here's decommissioning. So, this is really the meat of it, as much as deciding where it's going to go is important in consideration of neighbors and the property itself, the future. And the answer is though, solar's been around for a while, really, no decommissioning has really occurred throughout the country, because it just wasn't fiscally possible for a while to install these, and they're typically 20, 25, 30-year leases. And so, decommissioning is these businesses, and it's been seen routinely buy the parcel, develop the parcel, sell the, sell the energy system. And then, that company may get absorbed by another conglomerate. You can just sort of think about, back in the day, there were a lot of hardware stores, a lot of different, and then bit by bit, they got bought up, and now we have what is located within the county for hardware. And this is, to a degree, probably going to map out like that, where it's already being seen. And so, this ensures that the county's going to know about decommissioning. So, one year before the intent to decommission occurs, they're notifying the county. They're going to have a decommissioning plan, that's going to be presented right at the beginning. Then, as you see in bullet point two, cost estimates must be updated every five years or upon a change in ownership, and this is all going to be at the cost of the facility owner. So, an individual comes forward with a plan for a 1.5-megawatt, gets developed, goes online for six, nine months, a bigger entity comes in, buys that up. Even though it has not been five years since the system went online, this new entity's going to have to do a new decommissioning plan. That entity may hold it for five years, five years down the line, they're going to do another decommissioning plan, it may get sold again. But this is the protection to ensure that that original amount upfront is always there. So, at the conclusion of the life cycle, if the business goes under, or whatever it is, if they're unable to decommission, the county has a bond in place. And since, in the past year, we've successfully had a solar system go online, produce a bond, and that bond's been tendered to the county, and they're beginning development of that site. So, what this will require is that all above-ground structures are removed, all underground wiring and structures are removed, that it considers how, what is going to be the process of disposing of these items, and then restoring the property to similar or better condition than at the time of installation. What we don't want is when you drive by nowadays, you can say, oh, I remember when I was younger, that used to be X. Well, in 25 years, somebody should say, that used to be a solar facility. Now, it's not just a rundown, rusted-out, bunch of broken panels, it's actually gone, and it's a field once again. Or, they've improved it, made it some way, as technology improves, I'm sure there's going to be longer periods of time that these are around, and the panels will be able to produce more and more megawatts. But as of now, this will make sure that the county is protected. And this is the financial certainty that was discussed, and this is what is in a form acceptable to the county. So, it's not the entity saying, this is what we're proposing, this is who are, we're using, you know, the Bank of Algeria, as an example. Well, I don't really have a lot of faith in the bank, in my made-up Bank of Algeria, we're going to make sure it's somebody who's going to be around and to be able to tender and make sure that the bond is redeemable. And then, finally, make it so that it's an actual nuisance, so that the solar energy system is not successfully decommissioned within one year of the filing of the notice of the intent to decommission. Like in an abandoned car on a property, the department can cite it and go to court over it. So, that's the extra teeth in the process to make sure that not only there's a bond, but, you know, that is a last resort, is the county wants to come in, hire an outside company, or use internal resources to remediate the parcel. But with this, it can begin the citing process of finding this company for not doing, and they have a year to do it. I mean, a year in advance, they're supposed to do it, and then they're supposed to begin it within a certain period of time thereafter, that's more specifically enumerated in the legislation. This was a great work product of staff, of the Planning Commission, there was a lot of time deliberate on this, and it obviously began with former Councilmember McCain. So, you have the full proposal that came out of the Planning Commission, this is a distilled version in, for the PowerPoint. Are there any specific questions at this time? Anything else that, besides the potential enumeration, that staff shall participate in the, in the greater, in the utility measures at the state level?
Questions? I had a couple, okay. And I know, and we all know that when we suggest this, the Maryland Public Service Commission, I mean, they do, I mean, I don't know if it's improper to say, but they've always sort of run roughshod, I think, over the local jurisdictions. Local autonomy is not really a big thing when it comes to who can put solar where, and I recognize that. That's why I think it's important, maybe, to try to step up a little more in trying to at least let them know what our concerns might be. The standards that you were talking about, Andrew, there, I like the standards, I also like, I really, really do like the fact that you thought it out for the decommission, for being decommissioned, and I know Joe Holloway loves the performance bond part of it, because he's always talking about that. But, I guess my questions are, the standards apply to the solar miner and solar accessory only, and not to the solar utility? Is that correct? I do, I'm saying that based on the size of the facility, the fact that the miner and the accessory are two or less.
I think I can...
Okay.
What this would establish, President Cannon, is a standard for the county. So, when we are lending our review to a larger project, which is going through the Public Service Commission, we now can cite something specific in our code, these are our standards at a minimum. You know, depending upon the site, we could certainly exceed that in our recommendations. But by codifying this specifically, we do, will now have a legal document that we could put in the Public Service Commission's hands, the land use judge that would review the case and say, this, these are current practices in Wycomico County, rather than relying on conditions of approval from a special exception or something, we can now cite code.
Okay. From the PowerPoint, it seemed to me, though, that the standards did apply to solar miner and solar accessory, and I'm not quite sure, because solar accessory does include homes, right? Somebody wants to put a little tiny solar in their backyard, they would have to have a 75-foot setback?
No, that's, the accessory solar is looked at just like any other accessory structure, no different than a pole barn or something on a piece of property, so the same setbacks would apply and that sort of thing. But rooftop-mounted solar, obviously setbacks are not going to be an issue, but like a backyard rack that would have, you know, five panels on it, would have to comply with normal building permit processes and setbacks, those types of things.
75-foot setback?
No, a normal setback, five feet rear and side light lines, things like that.
All right, I was just trying to get...
75-foot was for the...
75-foot, I'm guessing, I mean...
That would be for the miner, that, those facilities require special exception.
Okay.
Yeah, the bond that they have to get, would that be, would that go with, with interest over, over years? Does that grow in value at all? Because, you know, in 20 years, or 25 years, or whenever it gets taken down, you know, that cost could be more. I don't, I don't know if that, that'll grow in value, or...
So, that's where the, every five years, so the bond is not, the bond sort of acts like an insurance document. You don't have to, if you have $100,000 coverage on your home through your insurance company, you don't have to give your insurance company $100,000. You make those premium payments, and they're making the bet that you're never going to have to cash in $100,000 on your home. The bond operates in the same way. A bank, or some sort of financial entity says, we're going to agree to put up this amount of money over a period of time, for us pledging this amount of money, the entity that takes out the bond pays that financial group. Every five years, a decommissioning plan is completed, and if that number to decommission because of inflation, or whatever, goes up at the end of those five years, the solar energy system, or the landowner, needs to put up a new bond to match that. So, the first bond might be at $200,000, but in year 20, five years before decommissioning, it might be at $500,000, because of new government regulations at the state level, or federal level, or just envision whatever you want it to be, that just become. So, it's not, the county currently doesn't have on the one bond, $200,000 sitting in a bank account somewhere. It has a piece of paper from a financial entity saying, we are backing this, just like an insurance agency says, we are backing this in the event you need to redeem it. And then, but through the process, nobody wants to put up that money, Ms. Carter doesn't want to have her department going out there supervising remediation... Ms. Carter doesn't want to have her department going out there supervising remediation of these sites. The goal is to have the companies do it themselves. But there is that protection at the end of the day so that the amount of money pledged is equal to the amount of work that needs to be performed.
Um, to elaborate a little bit on what Mr. Illuminati said, when the Planning and Zoning Commission, when we studied this and did this, it put the onus of the responsibility on the landowner as far as paying the bond because these solar companies have a history of selling out, selling to someone else, you know, a larger company coming in. And through the, I would call, I guess you could call it the shuffle of buying and selling. At some time, at some point in time, between some of this happening, we could find out that, okay, this company bought this solar project out. There's no bond right now active because they didn't pay it possibly. So this protects not only the landowner, but it also protects the county. So if the landowner is alternately responsible for the bond, until they sell the land, and then if they happen to sell the land, then that bond would have to transfer, you know, with the transfer of sale.
Would that be the case or legally would you treat it like a lien? Other than the bond has to go with the sale of the farm, of the solar product, of the solar facility, right?
It, it's going to go with the landowner. The reason why I kept saying it's going to be with the, the system provider is because when these contracts are written, part of the value is the land. And if the landowner has to put up the bond, that's going to cut in. So any landowner is going to need to make sure that condition of the agreement is that they're reimbursed for whatever the, the bond is. So that ultimately, the landowner is the one whose name it is in. But it's making sure that landowner is compensated, if the landowner wants to be compensated for the cost of the bond. But it will be, and then if there is a default because it's with the landowner, because it's a nuisance, then it can go to court and it could be attached as a lien. The cost of remediation could be, could be there. But that's a worst case scenario, which I don't believe, it's not in the interest of business. It's not in the interest of the county to get that far down the line.
Any other questions? Um, anything else you'd like to elaborate on? Okay, so, um, how, where will this go? I guess that, and when it comes back to us, will it come back to us as a work session, you think?
Well, I was going to ask their thoughts as far as the state legislation, changing it from the two megawatts to the five megawatts. Because in the proposed legislation, it mentions the two megawatts. Um, before we move it further for introduction, should we wait and see what happens at the state level?
My understanding is that the two megawatt standard will still apply. Anything exceeding two megawatts will still require the issuance of a CPCN.
Okay, so it's not going to get bumped up to five?
No, it doesn't seem like that. It's not going to.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. All right, and, um, I guess we'll get it, we'll get it, um, on the agenda. I, I don't think it would really warrant another work session. Um, the suggestions that I had made, however you may want to implement it, if you really think it's going to muck up the works, let me know and you, you know, you can, you can throw it by the wayside. But I was just throwing it out there to see if it was a viable option. But, um, I would say we would go ahead and put it on for introduction. And in those work sessions, I think we can iron anything out that we have to, just in the introduction alone.
We want to incorporate the changes that were discussed tonight into the draft legislation.
Right.
Yeah.
And if they feel, if you feel it's unreasonable, just let us know. We, we can exchange, we don't have to do it all in a work session. I mean, you can share that with mayor, with whomever.
I think the only thing that, um, if I can say, uh, that I understood from you, that you said that it shall, um, that, uh, staff or however, shall attend whenever it's greater than five megawatts.
Well, no, I'm sorry, um, I was, at that point in time, I was a little confused between the five and the two and all that. But I think you know the intent of what I'm asking.
Yeah, no intent, yes.
Sure, thanks.
Okay.
To ask for a representative to be there to...
Yes, yeah.
That's what, yeah.
I think, this is just my opinion, but I, I think if it's going to be a representative, it, it, it should be the person with that council district or, or, uh, or the county executive. Someone that, so we don't have someone like, just say, from district, a small district going out to a completely other district that has nothing to do with that district and they're making decisions.
Actually, I think it's really more, more for staff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We, our obligation, we can't legislate that on the executive. We can't legislate it on ourselves. I get it. But, um, we're usually notified whenever there's any type of a public hearing with the Public Service Commission. So at that point in time, any representative can go. The executives could certainly go or, or you could go and...
Thank you.
Do it there, so. All right, uh, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
This is Carter. Thanks again this week.
You're welcome, sir. I appreciate it. No problem at all. That's what we, that's what we're here for.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the update on the Police Accountability Board. And we have Pam Olend, Director of Finance, John Monar with the Director of Information Technology, and Mr. Illuminati. How's everybody? Oh, and Mr. Wilbur too, wonderful. Yeah, okay. Thank you very much, Laura. If you're, if you're ready, just state your name and your, your position from the left. Thanks for the public, thanks.
John Monar, Director of Information Technology.
Andrew Illuminati, County Attorney's Office.
Paul Wilbur, County Attorney.
Pam Olend, Finance Director.
Andrew?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is an update on where the county is with the law enforcement review boards. So a year ago, about the process began to come before the former council to implement state law into the county code. And I'm going to go through this as a revisit that Wycomico County has a, there are three boards under the state law. There was the Police Accountability Board. That's nine citizens appointed by the county executive, approved by the county council. There is an administrative charging committee, which is two citizens appointed by the county executive and approval by the council. Then the Police Accountability Board appoints two people who are not from that board, who are citizens of the public, to the Administrative Charging Committee. There is a chair of the Police Accountability Board, and he sits on the Administrative Charging Committee as well as the Police Accountability Board. And then there's finally a trial board. And one off, if that ever gets triggered, there's an officer of equal rank to the charged officer, uh, from a different agency appointed. There is a judge appointed by the county executive with the approval of county council. And then there is a citizen, which is appointed by the Police Accountability Board. So this slide may look familiar to some of those who, uh, served before. The Police Accountability Board was, is incorporated in state law at the Public Safety Title III. The responsibilities are to hold quarterly meetings with the heads of law enforcement and otherwise to, uh, work with law enforcement agencies and the county government to improve matters of policing. Appoint civilian members to the Charging Committee and Trial Board, which we talked about. Receive complaints of police misconduct filed by the public. On a quarterly basis, review outcomes of disciplinary matters considered by the Charging Committee. And then honor before December 31st of each year, submit a report to the governing body of the county. These are the individuals who were appointed and confirmed by the former council with their terms. The county, so the, as a quick overview, the formation of the Police Accountability Board. There were two separate advertising periods in the last summer. The vacancies were advertised on the council website, uh, the county website and at county council meetings. The county received 36 applications. There's a screening process. Thirty-two of the 36 were eligible for at least one oversight board. The applicants were divided by council manac districts. And then on September 6th, uh, there, so there's one member from each council manac district. Uh, then there's the two at large, and then the council, uh, the county executive appointed additional two at-large positions from anywhere in the county. Those were confirmed on about September 6th, and they began their work shortly thereafter. They've met four times since confirmed, and they've discussed various measures to ensure equal access for all community members. And then those, those concepts or feasibility studies are being reviewed. Then there is the appointments to the ACC and Trial Board. Again, the Police Accountability Board appoints two members to the ACC. We'll get into what the duties of the ACC are. They appointed two individuals, Lloyd Brewster to a one-year term and Carl Sayea to a two-year term. Uh, they, this is what they went through. They also appointed five individuals to serve as trial board members. Those are the five individuals there. Uh, the, a reason, on the slide, it shows one person sits on the actual trial board, but there's always the possibility of a conflict of interest, people being unavailable. So the, it was set at five in those county legislation, and those are the five individuals. Uh, the first quarterly meeting with the chiefs was held on November 16th. All the local chiefs came. They provide an overview of their agency's composition, jurisdictional boundaries, uh, made themselves available for any questions and answers. And then this is the review of the disciplinary matters. So the Police Accountability Board is not the Charging Committee. They do not make decisions on whether to charge an officer based on a complaint. All they do is review the Administrative Charging Committee's, uh, disciplinary outcomes after the matter is completed. So the ACC underwent a state mandated 40 hours of training during the week of November 14th. Uh, they could not begin reviewing complaints until that time. And through February 28th, there have been 10 complaints filed, and seven are still awaiting review by the ACC. So the Administrative Charging Committee or the ACC, their composition and their, uh, charges set forth, again, in Public Safety Article Title III, they received a much more extensive training because they're the individuals making the decisions whether to charge or not to charge, and they meet once a month. The police account, both boards are open meetings. They meet, uh, Police Accountability meets the third Wednesday of every month in council chambers. The Administrative Charging Committee meets the fourth Monday of every month in room 300. So the Administrative Charging Committee reviews the findings of the law enforcement agency's investigation. Only a police agency can investigate a complaint at this time. They consider the findings of the investigative agency, and they make a determination whether or not to administratively charge the officer who's the subject of the investigation. If the officer is charged, they recommend discipline in accordance with a statewide sentencing matrix. The goal, I believe, of the legislature was so that an officer in Wycomico County, Prince George's County, Allegheny County, for committing the same style of offense would all receive the same punishment. So that is something that is outside of the county's control on what the matrix looks like. The Administrative Charging Committee does not file criminal charges against a law enforcement officer. That is the job and responsibility of the state's attorney's office to make criminal charge determinations. Uh, this is again the composition of the board with their terms of appointment. This goes, this matrix sort of is a flow chart to help explain what I've talked about so far and a little bit more. So you see, no matter where the complaint starts, if it's referred to the Police Accountability Board or it's referred to the law enforcement agency that employs the officer, the law enforcement agency conducts an investigation. After that, they have to conduct that investigation under state law. They then refer to the Administrative Charging Committee. Those five individuals have to decide if to charge or not to charge. If they make, if it is unfounded, as the three to date have been, then it ends. There's nothing more. There's no appellate process for the complaining party, and the officer wouldn't want to appeal. If charged, the ACC has to make an offer in line with the statewide disciplinary matrix. So for an example, uh, if an individual was just, unfortunately, a rude or discourteous, was found to be rude and discourteous, the ACC could not recommend termination. That is outside of the parameters of the disciplinary matrix. So they are checked by state regulations on that. The officer then has two options. He can accept discipline, uh, that's extended, in which case it's over. The officer can refuse, can say, well, you're asking for two days' leave. I, I'll accept one day of leave. The ACC can accept that, in which case it's over. Or reject it, goes back to the officer to make a determination whether to accept the original officer, original offer. If accepted, it ends. If it's not, if it's refused, the matter goes to a trial board. And those are the three individuals we talked about earlier. If the trial board clears the officer, the matter is terminated. If the officer is found to be, uh, in violation of the policy, the officer may continue to appeal to the circuit court.
Mr. Illuminati?
Yes.
Quick question. If an officer has such an egregious offense that the state's attorney decides to charge them, it doesn't go through all this process? It doesn't have to go through all this process?
No.
Okay.
Uh, there could be a point in time where it does, but I would imagine that if the, the state's attorney's office has to charge at unprobable cause, that's such a high standard to begin with that knowing...
So that would trump anything else that would, would happen further down this matrix?
Exactly. And if the officer, the former officer then at that point is, um, and there's also, depending on the level of the charge, the officer can be suspended. They're not paid. It, it gets into more details when you get into, unfortunately, criminal activity. Okay? Any other questions right now in the process? All right, so this is just the slide that goes into a little bit more detail. It describes the complaint. They have to name the officer. They have to provide a description of facts. This allows the agency to follow up with the individual. And then they have, if it gets filed with the county, within three days, it gets to the agency with the goal that the agency can begin their investigation right away. After the, it then goes to the Administrative Charging Committee. So one example is, uh, in all of them so far that have been reviewed, the agency talks, I believe, talks to the complaining party. In one of them, the person said, I don't want to go any farther. I, I'm done. But unfortunately, there's not this, by state law, there's not that ability. All complaints need to go to the ACC. So then that complaint, had it went to the ACC, ACC reviewed it on their own, found it unfounded, but then also gave great consideration to the fact that the complaining party was satisfied after meeting with the Internal Affairs Officer. Uh, all this confidentiality is throughout the process. It's not really about an innocent still proven guilty type standard as we talk about the criminal, but making sure nonetheless that these, the officers, uh, their reputations are protected, that the matter remains confidential. And that's going to be something that we're going to touch on later as we get to some of the, uh, equipment that is recommended. So within 15 days after the charge is issued, uh, if the ACC charges, the chief has to then sit down with the officer and explain what is offered. It can be accepted, rejected, or renegotiated. And then if not accepted, then we go to the trial board. And this is, again, the flow chart that controls. This is always the best tool to say, where is it in the process and where can it go from there? The trial board, I'm going to get into the trial board just a little bit. There haven't been any that have gone to the trial board. But later in the presentation, there's going to be, uh, discussion about a contract for the judge. And so I want to first explain that the state law requires an actively serving or retired administrative law judge or a retired judge of the district or circuit court to be a member of the trial board. Now, there was a opinion that was issued by, what's it, basically the Judicial Ethics Committee, and they said, any judge... And they said, any judge who's of the district or circuit or the appellate courts, who still sits in a retired capacity. So on occasion, so the other day I was before, uh, Judge Don Davis. Uh, he is a retired judge for a number of years from the circuit court, but he still sits as a recall judge on occasion. Judge Davis is excluded under the law from sitting, uh, as the ju- trial board judge. And there was great, this was something that was kind of expected. We, I worked with the surrounding counties. We called every judge that we could think of who was retired, who's living down here, who's actively serving, not actively serving. And, uh, it basically came down to there wasn't, uh, the ability to participate in the process. So if you look at the first sentence, it's an actively serving or retired administrative law judge. Administrative law judge if, uh, is not appointed by the governor, there, they deal with administrative law matters. So if, uh, the MVA, you get a point revocation for unfortunately too many speeding tickets or traffic violations. You can go before an administrative law judge and say, well, I really need to drive and I've, I've done these programs. So please let me drive and put, put certain conditions. That's what an administrative law judge, that's a very small part of what they do. They hear a lot of different matters in the administrative state. But so it's not, it's somebody who's more than qualified. They've gone through statewide training on this. And that's who the county is looking to, uh, fulfill that role on the trial board. These are the civilian members that were appointed. Only one of them would be eligible to serve on any one case, but it gives a pretty good pool of individuals, uh, to make sure there's no conflicts. And then this is now where some items needing action. So this is three parts. Uh, the three, one or two of the public.
Crinners, real quick, come to the last slide.
Yes.
Um, based on the, the trial board.
Slide before, sir.
You could go there. Yeah, the, the, yeah. Here you have five members of the trial board. I thought there was only supposed to be three. And in a prior, um, on a prior screen, I didn't want to interrupt, but in a prior screen when you were talking about the, um, appointments, uh, you asked, there was actually a statement that the, um, uh, police accountability board had appointed those five individuals. But the police accountability, as I understood, there's only supposed to be three people on the trial board. And the police accountability board does one, the executive does one, and then the third one is, is an officer.
Correct.
So how do we get from three to five?
Great question.
Yeah.
Apologize for not clarifying.
That's all right.
There, when there's an actual trial board, so I'll use officers, a made-up Officer Smith as an example. We'll say Sharp Town Police Department since Sharp Town doesn't have a police department. Officer Smith is charged by the administrative charging committee. Let me see if I can go back a few. He's charged by the administrative charging committee. He's given an offer. The officer rejects it and says, I want to have a trial board. Okay? That trial board would consist of three people. One member of the public, the administrative law judge, and then officer of equal rank from a different department. Okay? But unfortunately, small county, if there was only one person in the queue of the civilians and that person's conflicted out, then there would be a need to come back before council and ask for another individual. So when the county code was drafted a year ago, there were five members that were eligible for appointment to make up this queue. So we see Mr. Beecham, and this is Mr. Casaboom, Mr. Marshall, Mr. Dixon, and Mr. Glushakow. Mr. Beecham may say, I know Officer Smith. I may be the first one up in this queue, but I'm unable to sit. So then it falls to, Mr. Casaboom would be the next person to say, okay, I'm available to serve.
Right. And I get, I get that. You have to have, you have to have people who are, who are ready to do that. But I guess my question is, of the five that are there, who was appointed by, because only one is supposed to be appointed by the, the police accountability board. One is supposed to be appointed by the judge, the, and one is supposed to be appointed, I mean, one is supposed to be appointed by, um, I think the executive. One is supposed to be appointed by police accountability board and the officer is supposed to be appointed by the law enforcement agency.
Correct.
So I'm curious, I don't know which of these are whom and how do we determine where the other two would come from, that, those appointments, how those appointments will be made?
So these are purely the civilian members. These are not the officer or the judge. Okay? These are just the two civilian member, the, the civilian members.
Okay.
And within the code, in anticipation of the possibility for a conflict or individuals being out because of vacation or just for whatever reason, the, it allows for a pool of five individuals. All those five individuals are appointed by the police accountability board. They made these five appointments. These five individuals have been trained. And then if unfortunately there ever comes a time where there needs to be a trial board, only one of them would be eligible to sit on the trial board along with the judge and the officer of equal rank. Does that clarify your question?
Well, I don't want to belabor it really too much, but, um, from everything we've been working through, there was an appointment from the executive, an appointment from the law enforcement and one appointment from PAB. Now you're saying there are five appointments from PAB. So I'm, I'm just confused. You, do you know Pam?
It, so what he's saying, trying to say is, is that when this law was created, the law was created to give us flexibility such that if, as Mr. Illuminati said, there's conflicts, one of the five. So again, what he was saying is, is if we only appointed one.
I get that. Yeah.
But that, that, but that's the thing is, is that we have a pool, but only one would serve.
You have to have alternates. I get that.
But that's the alt, those are the alternates.
Mr. President, so section twenty of the law says composition. Paragraph B reads, no more than five civilian appointees may be appointed by the Wycomico County Police Accountability Board to be eligible to serve as a voting member of a trial board.
Okay.
That's the authority where that came from to appoint five.
Okay. I was going by your screen, uh, the screen on the establishment appointment where it had one, one and one only. That's why I was a little bit not understanding this part of it. So these are five appointed by the PAB, not one.
Five were appointed by the PAB, but only one can sit on the trial.
Understood.
That screen was, the, the first screen was to show what a, a single trial board would look like.
Okay. And did, we did get the appointment, are one of these the appointment from the executive or, or is that completely separate?
So they just, so they just.
Hang on, let me just, just real quick.
So none of these came from the executive.
Okay.
These are all from the police accountability board. The executive with council confirmation is only to the judge.
Okay. So, okay. All right. So this is not the entire trial board?
This is not the entire board. This is solely the civilian members.
Okay.
And the, your oversight and the council's appointing authority does not come from county code. It comes from state law.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. Good. Which one's?
I was just, never mind.
All right. Okay. So it's been about nine months, it's been about a year since I first came before you. Uh, it's been about nine months since the legislation's been enacted. And so in those nine months, uh, former acting county executive Posoda and I worked to take what was state law, the regulations from the Maryland, uh, appoint, deeming authorities and then from the county code to implement what is required. And so over the course, the first three months or so was advertising and then getting that appointment to you until September. From September until about November, when the first round of training occurred, December, when the PAB train occurred, there was making sure, how was the, how was all this going to interact? How was the code going to be followed? And then at the, over the last few months, since Madam County Executive came in, it's been about fine tuning and making sure that we are compliant with the state law requirements across the board. And so this, at this point, is a sort of year in review, what's been observed. So I can share with you what has occurred. Uh, the members of the accountability board, the ACC, they are willing to come before to express their impact. But I thought this would just be the opening to discuss what is there, where, what is mandated that still needs and what's to be considered. So the first is, and these are no particular, the establishment of a budget and staff. Uh, provide for a budget for these matters. Uh, create and fund a full-time county employee to oversee the interactions among the three boards and fund a file sharing source for use amongst the three. So going into the first, this provides the duties of the board and says establish the budget and staff for a police accountability board. Uh, right now, they're, the budget for each, the trial board, the police accountability and the administrative charging committee is at zero dollars. Uh, so to date, uh, just to play into perspective, the ACC has completed forty hours of training in addition to meeting. Uh, these individuals took a week off from work. The, the acting county executive at the time could not provide a stipend, reimbursement for travel, food or any incidentals because there was no budget. The individual still volunteered for that position, took that time off from work and completed the training. The trial board, that was sixteen hours of training. That occurred a few weeks ago. Uh, five people took two days off from work. The county executive once again couldn't provide a stipend, reimbursement for travel. They had to go to Sykesville for this training, uh, was not done on the lower shore. Lodging, food, incidentals, there was no budget. Again, those five people volunteered for the position. They explained what it was and this is where it is. I am not here today advocating for, to begin paying board members. There is a consensus among the board members that they would like to be reimbursed. Uh, that other surrounding counties are paying stipends or, uh, reimbursement costs. But to date, there is no budget. That has not occurred. Uh, and I'm, and the county executive, I believe at this point, and council has not asked to begin funding these positions in terms of paid stipend positions. But as far as budgeting for incidentals for these matters, that's sort of the baseline. The next step up is to have a county employee, uh, there's one county employee who's on assignment from another department handling the secretarial matters of the three boards. So this came about because when the acting county, the former acting county executive and I, uh, after everyone was appointed, realized because it has to comply with open meetings, there needs to be someone keeping a secretarial staff. There needs somebody who's taking minutes, who's publishing minutes, creating an agenda. Uh, on September twenty-second, I have a twenty-point to-do list that then less than two weeks later on October sixth is now down to a ten-person to-do list. All of that was done by the law department, creating the first agenda, making sure that got uploaded to the county website. And, and once the administrative staff from another department came on board in November, uh, that task was then delegated to that individual. But in the beginning, these are all administrative functions that were being fulfilled by the law department. And so what I'm, and what the county executive is saying is that this is not legal work at some point where this is ministerial work that needs to be done by another type of individual. And the request at this point is to have a full-time person. Uh, looking at, you know, I understand, I'm cognizant that throughout the state where we fall in relation and there are some boards that have executive directors, there are some boards that have staff members. I'm really just going to focus at Frederick County. They have an executive administrator. Uh, Charles County has a clerk of the board in addition to the county attorney. Hartford County has a citizen affairs office, so that's where this position was directed for oversight. And Allegheny County has a director of legal services and a director of communications that has oversight over this. So not law department. These are smaller counties and this is how they're addressing it. If the department, if the council deems law department should continue to function, there's a state mandate to keep doing it. It's going to keep getting done. I just want to understand, everyone to understand that a lot of the current tasks are being fulfilled by the law department, uh, which does.
You finish your sentence and then I'm going to ask a question.
Becomes costly.
Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt you. Pam, I, you know, we have a lot of boards and commissions that serve in the county. Most of them, you know, they just come to this office, such as the planning and zoning commission for the volunteers that serve on that. When we talk about the county executive couldn't provide a stipend, um, or pay for transportation for these people that were having to go to the other side of the bridge and couldn't there have been a budget transfer done for that and been approved?
So there's no police accountability department. So there's no, um, current place to take that from. Um, so I was going, it, what I was going to recommend and what I'm, um, what, not me. The administration, sorry. It's not me. But in discussions today. The recommendation that we have is that we create a, a, a department in this next budget. So that way we can keep track of, there's, there's two ways to do it within munis. One is to kind of create a project within, because it is required to be managed by the executive. We could create a project and then you could report on that project code, but it does make that cumbersome. The advantage to creating a department within the, the county that has whatever expenses, um, in one of the previous slides it talked about, um, technology costs and the cost of an employee and the cost of, do we want to have a, we may not want to have a stipend, but do we want to pay for travel? Because most of our boards don't have to go anywhere but, you know, to the civic center or to here. But if they have, this board had to travel and if we have to replace any people, they're going to have to take training probably across the bridge again. So the, the intention of the twenty-four budget was to create a, a department, like there's a department of finance, like there's a department of law. If we have law costs, we would want to, instead of having it buried within the legal bill, be able to see how much it is associated with this police accountability. Additionally, the advantage to having it separated is, if I remember correctly, please tell me if I'm wrong. Some of the costs, if, especially, I think there, there's talk a little bit later about having to pay for the judge. If there's a police accountability trial related to somebody other than the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, there is authority to possibly cha- uh, not charge, um, bill the local jurisdiction for those costs. And so again, we have to consider that aspect of it and be able to, um, be able to track the, the costs associated if, if we do say that there are costs, which there's going to be costs.
Well, I understand that and, and you did say to begin with that you could, this could have been done under the county executive's office. And I'm looking here at seven complaints and you had how many total? Nine, twelve altogether?
Ten, seven.
Ten. Okay. So we're creating, we're talking about creating a whole new department in the county to handle maybe at the most twelve complaints a year or fifteen. I mean, that seems like a, and I know it has to be done because it was legislated in. But we're talking about creating a whole new department and a full-time employee when you, you know, you have a very minimal.
So again.
Force of action here, so.
It's, um, the advantages to having it be separate is that it's very transparent as to what it's costing the county associated with it. If you put it within another department, um, I mean, it could, it, it doesn't. Every department within the general fund, every department within the county is under the executive's, um, control. So it could go under any department within the county. The advantage, I'm not suggesting we create a, I mean, we, we have a department for gypsy moth service so that we can track. Because if you see your budget, you have a department for gypsy moth. We have a department for, um, it, it's an, the advantage of it and that's what they're called within munis is that they're departments. But I'm not talking about creating, um, the sheriff's office. I'm talking about creating a tracking mechanism within munis that is easy for finance and the council and administration to be able to see the cost related to this specific activity versus having to run it, um, parse it down. Because if I run you a budget right now. Because if I run you a budget right now for council, you, you have a code on there for internal audit. Well, I can run the cost of internal audit by that code, but that's not how you get your budget. So you don't see it at that level. You see it all combined. This would allow us to see what the cost of a police accountability, um, the framework is costing the county.
Okay, excuse me.
I think we're talking about not a charter-level department, but just in munis for finance.
I guess, getting back to the stipend. If a county employee now has to go on a trip and they take their personal car, they can turn in their mileage and get paid, correct?
So, yes.
So...
We had not...
You're saying no, and she's saying yes?
Well...
An employee can, but not PAB because we don't...
We did not create, we didn't create the, um, Accountability Board to have that authority. We haven't created any of our boards to have the authority to charge anything to the county. So I, I, I believe it would have to be something that we would create in a, at least in a budget, saying that council is aware that we're going to pay this specific board for these specific actions. Um, because right now, we don't have any boards within the county that we pay...
I, I'm not talking about getting paid for doing, I'm talking about going somewhere and getting paid for gasoline or going somewhere.
But that's, that is getting paid. That is getting reimbursed. And we don't have a mechanism for any of our boards to currently be reimbursed for anything. So that's creating something new that, um, I would believe, eh, would need council approval. We did not get any kind of council approval to pay anything to any of these people.
Well, if you have a county employee on assignment from another department handling the secretarial matters, you're paying that individual.
And right now, because we don't have a separate function, we can't, it is buried within the department that it's in.
State's attorney's office.
State attorney.
And a separate, not prosecutorial, in the prosecutorial integrity unit. So removed from the rest of the agency.
I think it's very important to pay people, if they're going to commit to this, volunteer their time, they need to get reimbursed for fuel, travel, meals.
So that's, that is something that we can place in the budget. And with creating those line items, again, the advantage to creating a separate munis department, not charter department, but munis department, is that council then would see what we are proposing and what you're approving associated with that. And that way, council is well-aware of what we're agreeing to pay for this board and this board only.
So excluding the board, you're looking for one full-time position?
We're looking for a full-time position, and I think, and I don't want to, but I think one of the other things we're looking at is a potential to be able to pay for that administrative judge.
Correct.
Because as of right now, we have not been able to locate anybody who is willing to volunteer to do that position. And so we are out of violation, or we're not in compliance because we don't have the ability to go to trial at the moment, because we don't have anybody willing to take that role. So again, having a budget set aside and a contract with somebody, um, we need those funds to be able to do that.
What's the salary scale for the full-time position?
Two hundred dollars an hour. The state wants their administrative law judges to be paid.
That's the administrative law judge. The position, it would, um...
Well, right now, we're paying Andrew a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. So on Tuesday, when he was with the ACC...